Thank you. Do I call her Siri or?
Uh, I don't know what to call her.
I want to be Miguel, but in it all of these days, that voice has got to be worth a fortune.
Um, I'm sure she got undersold for that.
I'm sure.
She probably does get royalties for her voice.
No.
At least I'm unpaid intern.
I'm gonna go ahead and share the screen. Get out of here.
Ready to get in line?
Okay.
This is the seventeenth, this is the seventeenth, this is the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the City of Jefferson Historic Preservation Commission. My name is Donna Dietz and I'm the Chairperson of the Commission. Please turn your phones off if you have them on. And I'm going to ask each person to introduce themselves and Laura is not in here, would you like to start?
I'll start.
Michael Berensen.
Tiffany Patterson.
Bill Neboos.
Brad Shaver.
How would we?
Donna Dietz.
Liaison.
Yes.
Name.
Harv Mark. Finally, Rachel Sinzie, City Staff. Rachel Sinzie, City Staff.
And we have a visitor.
Steve Hoffman.
We got Steve too.
Thank you, Stephen. Okay, the city code authorizes nine regular members, a quorum of five members is necessary to conduct business. I declare that a quorum is present. Are there any members who are disqualified from voting on an agenda item tonight? Seeing none. The agenda has been printed, I have a motion for the doctor agenda as printed, or does it need amendment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Thanks, Stephen. Think so, I gotta remember that. Is that five seconds? Uh, you also have printed the minutes from the previous meeting. Are there any amendments to that minutes? Any changes?
I believe they approved meeting minutes post ten two thousand twenty-one.
Second. And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is carried. Rachel, we have any communications?
We did, um, we received communications from the State Historic Preservation Office regarding a National Register nomination um, that we've received, um, and it's labeled as with the first after the minutes in your packet. Um, so Frank Miller Historic District. Um, it's listed as fourteen thirty-one Greenberry Road, but it actually includes three properties. If you've had a chance to to look through it, um, it's actually adjacent to the Moro Drive Historic, National Register Historic District. Um, I did speak with one of the property owners, well, probably about a year ago now. Um, and she was wanting to get her property amended into that historic district and it was not possible because the area of significant or the period of significance for Moro Drive was, these buildings were were too modern. Um, those buildings were, they were, so, so they, the, the period of significance for Moro Drive, I believe ended at nineteen hundred. Um, and this is nineteen oh eight, yeah, for that district.
And I thought that district was went into the twenties or thirties.
Well, we could go back and look it up, but, um, when, when they, when they were wanting to, to do an amendment to the districts, they weren't going to make it because of the period of significance. Because we, we wondered when we were doing our mapping activities, why Greenberry was an extended further down. Um, and that was it, it was, they, they got carved off. So, I think I'll look it up. We can look it up.
Let's look it up.
I, I got, I gotta Google this.
Well, but now, now you're saying it and I'm questioning myself, so I'm gonna make sure.
That neighborhood is post nineteen hundred.
Well, well, like my, my whole block is, like, aside of the ones nineteen seventeen, the other side is nineteen thirty.
And you're in the Moro Drive?
I'm in twelve hundred block.
Yeah. Yeah, I wanna say that.
Monaco.
But.
Yeah, the Monaco's the same one, more.
This is a war. But everything else is.
It's D N R dot mo dot gov forward slash shipo, isn't it?
I don't know where it's at anymore.
Is, can you type, can you type in D N R dot mo dot gov forward slash shipo?
No, they moved it from the State Parks website, that's why.
How about N P S dot gov?
And then that's top?
It's at the bottom. And then about us. You see, it's here.
Ha. I don't like that they moved it over, because nobody looks under State Parks for the shipo.
Yeah. I'd be no, I'd be National, so my county.
I hit it wrong.
Can I be bossy or maybe?
All of you, all of you experts in the room. No, I, I'm very happy.
You didn't know, I should.
I'm very happy.
Nothing better than having a bunch of people watch you navigate the website.
I'm down with it. Okay. Wow. There's a map. Well, I see you're in the twentieth century, I'm already gonna be wrong, I feel like, eighteen forty-seven to nineteen fifty.
Yeah.
I stand corrected. Now, I'm not quite sure why the, they.
Is there a gap? Because based on this map, it looks like there's a pretty significant gap between the, between the district and the.
Doesn't it come something like at Moro High School?
But, yeah.
Is that what it is?
Just, just short of Moro.
Well, why couldn't they be an extension? I know I've answered this question to myself before and I'm obviously wrong with what my recollection was.
Yeah, it's Moro High School. Because those houses right through there are, are after nineteen.
Yeah, there's like a chunk that's like.
So it's just a.
A modern, so it kind of goes around the corner there, doesn't it? And there's a gap.
It's in the.
A modern, a kind of modern.
It's in the second, I think it's about six pages from here. Actually, I thought those belonged to another house. Yeah. Well, actually, I knew that it, you know, because there's an easement here, there's an easement here to go back in.
Um, east, I think they're looking at these maps here. Yeah, because you can see this.
Yeah.
There's like.
Where this house.
Twelve houses, which would be.
Alright, we're gonna take a, we're gonna take a verse. Two words.
Yeah, I think it's the big gap that's about.
Go to some of the modern.
I think you're right, let me go ahead and share this, so that way.
Because they're like not same box.
Yeah. He's here, where, whatever, it was part of its farm also. This house here actually has an, has, their driveway is not really, it's actually a healthy, it's farm.
But this is what's dividing.
This little thing is this section right here.
There's, they're all built after nineteen fifty.
Yeah. Some of those are fairly modern.
So we have a subdivision divide, is that?
Yeah, there's like range, yeah, there's like nine houses, nine lots, eight or nine lots.
Like right in here, this is divided, because this is the Moro Heights District.
And that's, that's all of this, and then there's.
So those would be in the period of significance.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, well, that makes me feel better that I wasn't completely wrong. Just half wrong, that's okay, I'll take half wrong any day. Well, we're not gonna use the rule anymore. Okay. Alright, so there is a gap between the properties. And let me get back to sharing my PowerPoint. That was fun, guys, that was a real remember.
Okay. My memory's bad, but I do remember that district being not post nineteen hundred.
Not the neighbors.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Maybe says Mr. Bean in the other room, huh?
No, it's, it's, it's a, I am first. Let's try, must stop sharing. We share.
She says something with that computer, I can't get it.
Okay, so we're gonna stick with this theme.
I'll do it.
My apologies. Um, okay, so did everybody have a chance to read it in advance? Were, were there any, what, any conversations about it?
I can't see any reason to not support it for going through. It was pretty detailed on the chart before. Looking for, so you're more familiar with the actual property, is there any reason?
Okay, so the National Register nomination has, we have, we have this form that's up on the, up on the screen. Um, is not on the packet, but I wish I could make it bigger. Um, criteria significance, uh, in the National Register cover sheet, they have um, property embodies a distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction, or represents the work of a master, possesses high artistic values, or represents a significant and distinguishable entity whose components lack individual distinction, um, which is criteria and C. Um, is everybody in agreement with that statement of significance?
Sure.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
No problem. Okay. Integrity. Um, the property retains authentic historic character from its period of significance. Um, the property has been significantly altered and no longer retains authentic historic character from its period of significance.
They seem to retain, I'm just saying. I mean, I wish I could see the outbuildings, because.
The outbuildings actually do.
Okay. I wish they, I wish they.
At least they did within the last couple of years.
I'm surprised they didn't send copies of the photos in the packet.
I might note that, you can't really comment, but when I send this in, I might note it, that we'd like to. Yeah, because they denote it in the list of pictures, they just didn't send it to us.
Yeah.
So you can look on the list of pictures that we have, those be included.
Been nice to see those, especially since, I mean, there's what, eleven contributing outbuildings?
Yeah, so it would've been nice to see some of those, but I'm just, I'm sure.
Yeah, and then described a few of them as being, you know, the stone, you know, edifice and everything else, but.
Well, and I, I wrote out, drove out there just to. Yeah, I've looked at them, I didn't look at the outbuildings. Yeah, like, well, the McHenry House, like, it's hard to get back there, but I knew that once upon a time, I don't know if it's still there, there was like a golf course or driving range.
That's it, that's on the, that was sold off.
Oh.
That's not on the property of it anymore.
I was just curious, so there was something there?
Yes.
Okay.
There's actually, there was a lake. Also, it's down behind the rehab, it's part of it also.
Really? So do you guys want to hold off and request that before or?
I mean, I don't think it's, it's down behind it, it just seems like it would be worth the eyes. Yeah, see if in the future, if there's like photographs associated with the nomination, it'd be nice to see all the photographs.
Yeah, because they've listed them here.
Yeah.
Yeah, walking through the fountain, the yard, where the gazebo, the garage, the.
They didn't send any of the.
They didn't send them?
Any of the photographs, so.
I'll circle back with the shipo and we'll get those photographs.
But this is an FYI.
Yeah. In the future.
Okay.
So anything else that we have to answer?
Yes, review comments, uh, so there, there's the, that third section that's below. Um, the Commission Board recommends that this property is significant, retains integrity, and is eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Prices, or does not meet the criteria, or the Commissioner Board can also choose not to make a recommendation.
I would make a motion.
I would make a motion that it does, that we before.
That we need a second.
Second, yeah.
We have a motion on the floor to support the nomination, we have a second. Any further discussion?
I guess I have a question, so why didn't they include more of the original laying out?
That might be a property owner issue. Because the more property owners you add to it, the more likely you are to get rejected by the number of property owners, because you have to help.
So.
Are you saying like you would, you would, you would have wanted more of the?
So just within the last couple of years, there's been two sections that were divided off of it, and I just, just curious.
There should be.
Boundary justification in here.
Because there's still, because there's like, there is an alley, actually, that down there, like, goes, you actually have a map of what we're looking at there.
Yeah.
Um, where, where the Moro Drive ends, the Moro Drive District ends. If you look through your pages there of the map you're looking for. There's like an alley there, it goes back there to this, to that land there. That was part of the McHenry.
Oh, that girl.
Yes, that was part, that was, it was in the Miller property, and then this other section back there that's not in that, also, that's part of it also, still. That was divided off also, just in the last.
So they, they sold those two pieces off?
They divided up off the McHenry to get that sale, you know, through.
My guess is that, well, it's a property owner issue, because there's nothing on that land now that represents the architectural significance of the property. Because it's not agriculturally significant where you would need the land necessarily. And if somebody else owns it, then those people would have to be notified that their property is being nominated to the National Register and it, it could complicate the nomination.
Any further questions or discussion? You ready for a vote on the motion then? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Thanks, guys. Hey, new business, ordinance one six one five four, Rachel.
Um, yes, I just wanted to notify, um, the, the Commission, whenever there, whenever twenty twenty first happened and we had COVID and there were questions about, um, appropriate meeting uh, procedures, um, there is an ordinance that, um, was recently adopted. Um, and it's basically, there's, there's nothing that we're doing that is, that is different, but it basically establishes what the rules are for establishing a quorum. When you have a virtual meeting or a quasi in-person virtual meeting. Um, there should be, uh, in, in order to establish a quorum, you have to be able to have the video component of it. Um, they have to be able to see your face and, and make sure that, that you're, you're, who you are. Right, um, and also in voting matters as well. Uh, so I just included a copy that way, for your all's reference, that that's, that's the procedure that has been established for holding virtual meetings and, um, both in-person and virtual meetings at the same time. To now have that established.
So if you were needing Stephen to make form, he would have to be on video.
Yes. That's correct.
Do we need your face next time, Stephen?
It's, it's okay for now, and I, I prefer, I prefer, it sometimes slows up when you have people's, everybody's webcams going, so it works well, we're good right now. Okay.
Okay, all business, Historic Preservation Fund grant.
Great, uh, so we've received recently, within the past month, have received, um, three out of the four H P F grant. Uh, rewards that we applied for. Uh, I haven't received the, the denial for the Willinko Place National Register nomination, I'm waiting for it, but we have received word. Uh, but that will, that will prompt probably me asking the shipo, because the, from what I hear, and again, this is, I probably should wait until it's more official, but um, they did not, they felt like there was more resources, there needed to be more to establish a National Register District. And so then my question is, well, how much more and what more, show me on a map, that's, that's gonna be the follow-up.
So not enough buildings, is that what they're saying?
I didn't understand, I didn't understand it, quite frankly.
Because I thought that was a subdivision.
It is a subdivision. I didn't understand.
Okay. So we need to wait until we get clarification.
I think, I think, I think once, because they, they do generally, if they deny your application, they do provide comments on why it was denied. Um, so I think those will provide maybe some insight, um, because I would just like, if, if, they're gonna deny it, that happens, but I, I would like to know how to proceed, um, how do we circle back, because it was, I was surprised, um, especially since our consultants recommended it for listing. Um, so that's what we did, and then we, then we were told that that was not ready, so what makes it ready is, would be my next question. Uh, so that's the, that's the downer news, the good news is, um, we have, we've, we've already, um, accepted two of the grants. Um, one would be to, um, survey along the Lower Jefferson Conservation District, which goes back to, um, the Water Tower along West Main. Um, it includes the Water Works Complex, it includes Folklerson, the little, the street comes off right by the overpass. Um, and then it just kind of extends, uh, extends west, um, until we hit our property quota and then, um, with, with, within the boundaries of the subdivision. So that was approved. Uh, also, that was approved was the Historic East Resurvey. Um, that's gonna be a big one, but it's got over three hundred fifty properties in it, uh, but I'm hopeful, hopeful that, because it's already been surveyed, um, although albeit incorrectly, in nineteen eighty-two, um, we can, it happens, sometimes it happens. So I get to go back, um, but that'll tell us if we have any, um, resources that are still still possess integrity on the east side, and maybe we can move some of those areas around a little bit. This, the third one, uh, which is getting ready to go to council on Monday night, so it still has to be, uh, formally accepted, uh, is the Historic Context. Uh, so we applied to do a Historic Context of Jefferson City. Um, and what that does is it tracks development from the beginning of your city to current day, and it allows you to prioritize, um, and go after some of these properties that it's, and that's, that's where, like, maybe situations were, like with Simonsen, where if we'd had the context in place, we would have known that we wish, we should have pursued that listing. Um, and so that was something else that was gonna bring up to the Commission, is we've traditionally done uh, residential neighborhoods that have historic character, but if a true economic development incidence, we probably need to start looking more of our commercial areas and what buildings could potentially become vacant, and where would that have to, because within the past couple of years, we've just had, well, the past year, we've had Simonsen listed, we've had the, the shoe factory listed, as well as, um, the building that Big Whiskin's in. So those were all large vacant old commercial buildings that luckily have been kind of turned into economic development situations. It's a potential of adaptive reuse, and, and maybe we could get ahead of the game. Um, instead of, we're lucky to have developers that were willing to hold on. Um, but if something is already listed, then it's already a tool that, that somebody could use should, uh, a commercial building. So that's maybe a new way of thinking, but maybe something that, that we could, we can do. Um, so that comes up with, um, it's the, the cycle, so we, we just are receiving those awards, we'll have to go through a procurement process. Uh, the actual activities of those grants will probably start taking place, uh, maybe this winter, but most of the, the bulk of it will happen in twenty twenty-two. Um, and we, you know, the grants are on a three-year cycle, so now it's open, um, for new activities, and this would be for projects that we would start working on in twenty-three. Um, so we apply now, we find out if we get the award a year from now, and then we do the activities. So one of the things that, that we talked about in the last one, um, we just broke the subject, but we do have a formal, uh, resolution for, for the Commission um, to look at, and it is Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh three, supporting the survey grant application to the Historic Preservation Fund program. Uh, the city of Jeffer, whereas the city of Jefferson has the opportunity to apply for a Historic Preservation Fund grant to the State Historic Preservation Office of the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, and whereas the city intends to apply for Historic Preservation Fund grant to produce design guidelines, which will comply with the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation, and whereas the grant, if awarded, would provide approximately fifty thousand dollars for the project to the city for the purposes stated above, and whereas the grant would require the city provide forty percent match by means of cash or in-kind services, and whereas receiving said grant would benefit the city and historic preservation efforts. Um, so that is the resolution in its entirety, and I just wanted to remind the group of what the design guidelines would look like. If I can actually use the dot.
Rachel?
Yes.
You said approximately fifty thousand for the project.
Yes, total cost.
This is, my copy says twenty-three, I just wanna.
Alright, you're, you're looking.
Okay, sorry, didn't realize there were two.
That's okay, I've already been wrong tonight, so. Welcome to questioning. Okay, you're okay. Okay, so I always go to Denver's because they're my favorite. Um, so what, what, so as, as you all know, we are undergoing a Historic Preservation Code review revision process. Uh, that will, that will likely take a year plus to conduct, uh, the second step. Once those, once that code gets established, um, would be to, um, create design guidelines. Uh, and what design guidelines are, is there really a, um, a more of a call, because no, it, it's, code is very dry, and, and when you're talking about setbacks, when you're talking about roof types, when you're talking about different um, architectural features, when people are interested in developing or utilizing historic preservation as, as a tool, a lot of times folks don't know what they are. Uh, so di- design guidelines, and this is what Denver has recently undertook, and I, and I realize that we're not Denver, nor the size of Denver. Um, but what they do is they provide a general overlook, um, and they, they incorporate everything within their code, and they're explaining. This is what we're talking about when we say design guidelines, and these are the design guidelines for the city, uh, but then they also break it down for local historic districts and even national register districts, about what is required in each neighborhood. Um, so there's, there's kind of two components of the document, there's just a one, uh, general over, overview of the term, and they pull in a lot of the Secretary of Interior standards, um, they pull in, they site code, they pull in grant funding opportunities to be able to, to, to be able to mechanize some of these, some of these tools.
They do pictures.
They do pictures. Um, pictures are, pictures are a big deal. Uh, what they also do is they outline process, and I'm trying to get to it to one of their flow charts. Uh, and this is really what, and here, here they're really, quote, these are the Secretary of Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties. But they, they get into the flow of, this is how you do things, and they talk about everything from how you put, do additions to historic, historic buildings. How do you put new buildings and non-contributing buildings into historic districts? Um, how you demo, how do you do landscape and site design, how do you do signage, um, for some of your commercial areas? And then they have the appendices for the individual neighbors. Um, this is a nice flow chart, I wanna go to, but this is, you know, some of the things that we run into consistently is a, is a misconception that if your property is historic, that you can't do anything to it. If you're in a historic neighborhood, you can't do anything to it, um, and it's simply not true. Um, it just depends on what you're wanting to do, um, and if you're wanting to make those changes, to do them in a, in a manner that, that is correct and is, is beneficial to your neighborhood and not detrimental. Here we go. So this is kind of their, their advocate, their, their process, and this is just their process to become a historic district, not National Register local. Um, so they have this, this project flow, um, and they basically have an administrative review tract, meaning that if you're, if you're designed guy, if your, if your project is going within, uh, well, this is for application, so if, if, if it works, if it's fitting all the city code, if it makes sense, then you get to move to the next step. Um, or if. Um, or if it doesn't, um, you can go over to their, their Landmarks Preservation Com- Commission for a review track. Uh, so this is, this is basically tracking their buildings. Um, so for this one, like say somebody comes in and they, they're wanting to put a new roof on their building. And the building, the roof materials are within the design guidelines, they would go through an admin review track. They would get their approval and then they could do their obtained building permit. So what they have is that, but say they produce a roof material that is not within the design guidelines. But they're wanting to either grant an exception or maybe they can't afford, um, there's, there's an affordability issue there. Then instead of just going through the admin review track where it would just go through staff, it would get kicked over to this body. For review, but that, that's a, that's a change in mindset, so you would, this body would be reviewing exceptions to the. The naughty ones, they could be reviewing the naughty ones, so you'd be reviewing the exceptions to the rule. Or if there's, if there's like an affordability issue. But that's a different, that would be a different change, but that's completely up to you all if that would be, but. I'm, I'm, I'm going down a rabbit hole, but design guidelines, that's, that's their intent, is to be a tool of. How do I create a historic district, and then once I am in one, how do I maintain the property? My property or when I'm working at properties. Um, at the.
So this grant would help us.
Pay for somebody.
Pay for this to be the consultant to do this.
That's right. It's gorgeous, I'm trying to show you some of the neighborhood. Yeah, so this is where, or in the glossary terms, I went too far. Okay, so this is, this is, so for each historic district that they have, they, they break it down into exactly what makes that historic district unique. So it's not as if the whole city has to apply by the same standards. It's just breaking down what those standards would be in that. You know, in that appropriate situation.
Basically taking what we've got for, say, the Capital Lavity District and putting it into a full clip that says, this much setback, this much. Yep. Uh, torches and so forth.
And you can have photos and maps and, you know, some of the, some of the examples that we can provide currently aren't located within our city. So it'd be nice to be able to provide examples of photographs within our city.
Gotcha.
Um, we, we could do something like this in-house, but it would occupy most of the time, and I, I feel like if you get federal funding, then you should, you should. It's inside some outside source.
That's right.
That's right.
What questions do you have for Rachel before we go? Somebody makes a motion to approve this resolution. And make a motion. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries, Rachel.
Okay, so the next one, um, is a resolution to continue surveying. Before, before I go through this, I did say at the last meeting that I was going to, um, request from the commission if you had any ideas for. To review the historic preservation plan to see if there was any projects out there that you would like to pursue historic preservation fund programming with. Um, otherwise, with, with all the other federal funding, I, we're, we're tight on capacity. Uh, so we wanna continue, kind of keep momentum going, and we also. There's three round, three, uh, three rounds or two rounds of Historic Preservation Funds.
Just two.
Just two. Um, there wasn't, nobody is applying for these funds across the state, so.
Let's go for it.
Well, we have a plan, we have a historic preservation plan anyway. And i- is that, if that federal funding is there, um, might as well pursue it, and as a certified local government, we get, um. Obligated to at least ten percent of those funds, so. Um, I at least wanna do a project, if not two projects. Um, so what we kind of came up with is we could continue with surveying along West Main. Uh, but if there's any other concepts, cause they just brought up, maybe we should do commercial areas and then throw that out there. Um, but I would entertain any thoughts, ideas, suggestions on, on pursuing some of the components of the plan.
How about, how large does a commercial area have to be? In order, I mean, I'm looking at the east end. You know, the Whalies, Lafayette, that kind of area, is that a big enough area to do?
Isn't that already listed?
No.
I thought the Whalies corner was listed.
Whalies as an individual.
I know, but I don't like that whole street was part of the Cap, one of the Capitol.
They took it, they took Whalies only and then they skipped the rest of it and cut it out. So the six hundred block except for Whalies is not included.
If we had our eight map up, we could, we could instantly.
But that's what I'm looking at, you know, how large an area does it have to be? I know Munichburg's got nine. Nine buildings, nine buildings. And Munichburg, the south side's already got. Isn't Echo and that section is not done either.
Yeah.
Is it?
Okay.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. No, it's, it's from Echo East or. That would be east, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that section is historic district, but I don't think the area from Echo to Central Dairy, that commercial area, I don't think is.
Wow, let's go.
I don't think so. We were, we were trying to figure it out today as matter, that's the only reason.
We have a few things of current data that we have cleaned up. I don't wanna say a few things, like a few spreadsheets of current data.
Actually, the, the. Shipbo should have a GIS map with all the districts on it.
Where?
Go back to the. Um, let me see. Hold on. Maps and records, yeah. Yeah. Districts. Well, that's.
I. It, I never.
Yeah, that'll just take you back to the list, I think. But there should be a GIS map, cause all the archi, for all the one oh-six folks use it.
Says maps and records, but it's not connecting specific to that. Unless it's further down on the page.
Uh, yeah, I like.
We can't find anything on those pages that wouldn't since they updated.
Cause I think if. Just knowing what's, like, the grants that are coming out from the Department of Economic Development. But there's so much coming out from the Department of Economic Development in grants that's gonna be available in the next year for businesses. Commercial districts, I think that's gonna be worth taking advantage of if we can. For majority of small businesses and.
So this one, okay, so it's, it's that little, like, basically we're welcoming.
So that is.
That little strip, yeah.
So from Echo.
And then it jumps across and gets Bush's Forest.
Okay.
And central. And Central Dairy.
Okay, so it does disinclude that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have to let Matt know.
On Mass.
Saying it was not.
Ten, six, twenty, and seventy-four. Uh, but not across, not, not the Echo, not anything on Jefferson, not until.
So Echo is not.
Echo is not.
Okay.
Uh, and I think.
So it's just the other side of that parking lot is. So Echo and Jefferson is not. You know, cause that's what we were discussing is the Echo.
There is a section of. I just did that. There is a section of Broadway. It's in. Broadway Dunkland. This one has.
Yeah, that's where Schaefer House and.
Oh, Shipbo on my GIS.
I have it different here. So. Look at you, girl. Just take the one one. She's worth it. Okay. Yay. No kidding. Okay, so where's my? Layers here. Okay, that's not very helpful, I think it's, I'm, I'm assuming yellow is survey and green.
Yellow survey and gray, and gray is listed.
Right, so it's been, yeah, but the survey that is here was a. We'll go back to the map. So I'd be curious, but I think this was a, um, like a, a German, what do they call it? Tiffany, help me out, they don't do them anymore.
The multiple property documentation.
Yeah.
It was, they give all property documentation forms still.
Well, but this one was different because of the, the alley house that's of Dunkland, I was looking up to see if that could be. If we could combine the alley houses, and she said, well, we could use the, uh, this one because it is. She turned it. Play about our website with this one.
Yeah, cause there's like a historic south side Munichburg in PDF, yep.
Yeah, that's just not, I don't do them anymore. But we could still use these.
Hard time, believe me, they're not doing those anymore, but. But I've also been out of the game for several years too, so.
Or a minute. Okay, so this is, these are the resources that we have, do we want to, so this is. There you have our. So this was the survey that we did with Will, Willinko Place and the General Realty. Um, the area that we're getting ready to survey is. Yeah, basically, here's the, here are these properties, actually, Folklerson right here. Um, it includes the Water Works, and then it kind of goes down, um, and it's, it's almost like a J shape, which is Lower Jefferson. Um, that's, that's the, the, the subdivision that we're going to survey, so we could either continue on. Either off of that existing one or come back here, um, or we could take a look at some of the commercial areas.
Or we could not do any of that, which I don't think this group is interested in, but.
The Lower Jefferson area, I know it's West Main, but how far down does it go, does it include High Street behind it?
Yes.
Okay.
It includes, I think it goes down to Brooks. Could pull over in the map.
So now that area has to, uh, the mill bottom workers. All the bungalows.
Yeah, so this is, this is the survey.
She's in her forties and older.
Yeah, there's some, there's a lot of teens in.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And that's one of the things that the consultant would do is like identify the period of significance if it's, if it's eligible.
Well, there, down is that Brook Street that goes down McCarty.
Right here in the same.
There is an old German farmhouse on that one on Elm Street that is. And it's probably eighteen eighties or earlier.
Wait, you say it white, isn't it a brick house painted white on the corner?
Well, yeah, there's one on the side street, but I was thinking. Oh, Miller, I mean, there's a oldie, 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 one of these houses here is probably, uh, it's a German style or. It's probably eighteen eighties or earlier.
Yeah, cause our house, the one I lived in was nineteen oh-three up on West Main.
This is the area they cut off to try. Got on this.
This is, well, no, this is, this is the area that we're already going through. We've got it approved, so.
Okay.
So would you want to further survey connecting off of this, like discontinuing down? Or would you rather go back to?
Well, there are six kit houses on this block here. All from a Chicago company.
Yeah, low houses.
Yeah.
Was that part of the last survey?
No. The last survey was down here.
It's hard and, it's hard and high.
It's worth a little.
Yeah, that's not included in Lower Jefferson?
Not in the subdivision. And we had, so we went back and got Folklerson, because we have to keep the, the survey boundaries within, they like it to be around a hundred and fifty properties. As a manageable bite, and we are already pushing over two hundred with this section.
But that section was missed in the last survey and now I could.
Well, a whole lot of the section was missed in a lot of surveys, so here's Folklerson right here, this kind of dips down, we go down here.
No, I'm just talking about those part, those kid homes on Park.
Well, and that's where, and that's, so we can continue on, so you continue off, it would be cap, start capturing that area.
What you've just surveyed the.
Yeah, so this, this is the survey boundary of the last one. We didn't do across the street, which I know was, was a problem, right, I remember. Like, we didn't do the, across the street, um, and then there'd be this, this section of West Main along here that would be.
That cemetery on the north.
Well, right, but right here is, is more.
At St. Joe.
Oh, that's St., yeah, that's, that's cemetery in St. Joe, isn't it?
Now it'd be on the right-hand side of the old St. Joe.
Yeah, I'm talking like over here.
There was a house right there, yeah.
Right here.
Oh, yeah, to the left of St. Joe or to the west.
Yeah.
Right.
There was about three in there.
Or than that. Easy, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. This is that empty lot where they're.
That'd be a nice enough chunk to pick.
Yeah, and these are, these are the large.
Triangular piece in there too.
Yeah, that triangle piece is probably a little district in and of itself, cause six, six of the seven houses in that block. Are kit houses, and then, then there's that used to be a gas station is now some kind of office. Maybe it's because it'll change, change its office, but it's very, it's dogged and eyes is on that.
Howchen, I always pronounce the names. Okay, so i- is that what you guys wanna do, is continue from here? Or continue from where we left off last time?
We restricted to this one or just, or can we go for another, a su- a second one we?
Sure.
Cause we can extend this, but I can also see us going for a second in the commercial.
I would agree.
Commercial.
I mean, I'd like to see, we didn't make this up, just tie it together, but then also.
If we can.
Tie in some last stuff down, down in the, the old Munichburg.
Well, Echo, that area, the east end, and then I don't know where we are as far as. I know we've got so much that we're working on with the, uh, restoration, the grants that we got on, helping with the downtown area.
Yeah. Well, and that's another thing, like, there's, so the Shipbo was originally gonna give us a freebie project, uh, so let's say freebie credit. So when they, when they bring on new staff, they like to train them on a, on a real project, so they, they provide community with freebie project. Uh, originally, they were, they were talking about, um, revisiting the, um, Missouri State Capitol Historic District, which is, which is downtown. Um, and expanding it, and then also going back and looking at, cause a lot of the properties have taken down some of the facades that they originally had. And made them, made them not eligible, uh, so that, that's a, something that we could do, um, is look at, have something.
Thank you very much, sorry.
So having some, having somebody come in and, and look at that and say, do we have, do we need to do a boundary increase? Um, or maintain? I just think it's my, all these little individual pockets.
Hey, those little pockets.
Really?
Is there a lot of stuff? Is there a lot of stuff in between there that?
There are some.
Something to tie together to.
The dots are individual listings. So they, they're the, the property by itself. That's listed and then the, the boundaries are when they're districts.
Okay. But it makes sense to do the district as it is or not. There, those individual, there's, there's not really a lot between.
So what they talked about, see, I mean, there's individuals listed within the district.
Sure.
Um, and you know, sometimes that's like. Just a, a defender you can't, you know, it's, it's nice to be, have your, have a, have that name recognition.
Well, that particular one is the Queenie and the.
Yeah.
Yeah, which was listed long, long, long before the.
Yes, it was.
Before the.
Yeah, Ivy Terrace.
Yeah, Ivy Terrace, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, and you can see like Whaley's is that little back there. One way or one yet, but none of the other stuff is even.
That's a nice little commercial district.
Well, and this is, it's surveyed and, well, this is, this is a, this is the east, historic east survey that we just received. We're going to re-survey. And see if we have.
So that's part of it. And you can extend down because they literally stopped across the street and didn't bring it across High Street.
And like carvings, huh?
Yeah.
And so normally. So this is Hobo Hill. Um, so within our, we, I cut out everything that was already in a national registered district. Um, I think that was okay, um, but if our consultant comes back and says you should really just maybe do a boundary increase and that's something that we can talk to about. Do we need to do a, a new ser, or a new national registered district or do a boundary, a boundary increase off of, off of our state capital? Sorry, state capital. Probably extras and that's fine.
Before, I was gonna say, we're getting close to craziness time. Uh, do we need to, we need to get this resolution dealt with for the West.
So this.
West Main.
Right.
This is going to council as well.
Um, they'll have this one. So they don't have to, as long as it doesn't require more than a twenty-five thousand dollar match. Um, then I don't have to take it to council, which none of these are over twenty-five thousand dollar match. So it's a pretty quick turnaround on our side. That can be approved on the, on the, uh.
Basically.
Yes, the administrator can approve.
Okay, um, but you need to get this approved by us tonight and then we can decide if we're wanting to pursue other grants from there. Is that what?
Well, so we have one to do.
Oh, it's not, the preliminary is end of September.
So like, you need a decision on what?
Well, and then.
What we can go for.
Right, so if you guys are wanting to pursue a third. Yeah, let me know what that is and pretty quickly. Now, my instinct is, is that there will be, because the past several years, there's been multiple rounds of the H P F grants coming open. So it could be that they come open for, for a second.
Yeah.
Um. But that's, if you guys come up with ideas and, and please shop the historic preservation plan. It's a good way of coming up with projects. It has action items in the back that we're trying to accomplish.
And there's, I know in that plan, there's a lot on the commercial districts. That's the reason I was looking at. What can we do to help the small businesses?
Yeah, take a peek at it. Also, there's neighborhood plans that you can consult, um, South Side Neighborhood, South Side of Neighborhood Plan. There is a Central East Side Neighborhoods Plan as well. Um, and, and take a peek at them and figure out where the, where the things align.
Just let's bring back business.
Okay.
And we have a, we have one that we do need to approve a resolution concerning the grant for the West Main. And I can now obtain a motion to.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a motion on the floor to approve in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. I think you said aye, Stephen.
I said aye, yes, I did, Donna, thank you.
Thank you. All opposed?
Okay, the motion is carried. So you've got that, Rachel. Thank you. And then. Do you need something tonight since your deadline is the end of September? What you want, what we want you to look at and go for?
Um.
Or can we just give you general consensus of look at commercial districts and? What do you want? What do you need?
Well, well, we need to move quickly because we have that September thirtieth deadline. Uh, so if you guys have a project concept in mind. As quickly as possible. It doesn't necessarily have to be tonight, but within the week, is that a verb re-?
Are there any neighborhoods that are in danger due to maybe pending development encroachment and maybe target the, you know, just small little pocket neighborhoods?
I would say. Um, anywhere around the, the tornado area. All that is.
Jackson.
Yeah, Jackson. Jackson's problematic. Um, also going, jumping across fifty, if you look, basically the wood lawn area. Uh, and I, I thought, uh, there was going to be a, a volunteer effort to get those properties surveyed. Uh, basically along Adams.
Bakery.
Bakery.
They've been doing something on it, but I think they, it slowed down. Um, Jane and. God, I can't even think.
Doug and Doug.
Yeah, there was a group working on it, but I don't know where it is and I, it may have gotten way late because Jane's been working on it.
I think that's part of it. I think they have looked at all the properties and taken photographs and done all that. It's just like the report and the assessment and all that stuff that's been put together.
And I can, I can contact Jane and see where we are. Let me, let me get myself a note.
Well, but I, I just don't want to double, I don't want to double dip, right? So there's a group that's already done the work.
Yeah, that's, that's the area, yeah, that they've been doing.
Um, because the concept was if they, if they had a volunteer group that went out and did the survey work and did the legwork, then, then as the city, we could turn around and buy for a grant to get it listed. Um, so you can turn around and flip. Um, so that's kind of was the concept behind that. We'll see. But yeah, let me know how that works. But just within the week, if you guys have a third project, let us know and we'll. How to, how to make it happen and do, uh, I think we'll still, once it actually do do.
I don't have it on my calendar. I think it's in November.
Okay. So we maybe have another quick meeting to get it through after, but if we can start to work on it, because that's the, that's the labor intensive.
And I can remember just sending out a message to everybody to remind you. Top and down to YouTube. Let's get through our agenda as well.
Yeah. We must have missed each other. Uh, that's that we must have missed each other. We're all chatty.
Historic Preservation Code, where's, where's Vision Committee update? And I was not at the last meeting. It's up to you, Brad.
Well. Yeah, exactly. That's, I was also gonna ask you if you could help summarize, because I know we left off, we talked about the percentages of.
Right.
Whether that involved.
So we're.
With one property owner counted as one. But then we got this way.
Right, so we, we are talking about designation. It was always going to be hard because that's where you start. And if you're, if you're reinventing the wheel, which is kind of what we're for. Um, it, that's going to be the hardest part. And hopefully, once you get your rules established, what designation is going to be, then, then we can move a little bit quicker. Um, there was questions about currently in our code, there's. There's, we have three types of kind of land use regulations over historic districts, local historic districts. There's the overlay district, which is, which is the, the east capital. That's that example. That was kind of, that is, is controlled by zoning. So planning and zoning implemented that overlay. Uh, which is perfectly fine. That's a, that's a doable way of doing that. Then there is the Lower Jefferson Conservation District, which is a conservation district because you only were required to have more.
Seventy.
Seventy percent of the, I thought it was fifty percent, but.
No, it was seventy. I couldn't get to seventy-five.
So seventy percent of the, of the property owners had to sign on to become a conservation district. Seventy-five percent had to sign off on it to become a local historic district.
But the guidelines are all historic, so it really is a historic district. I'm going with that.
No, it, it, but, but you're right. Like once, so you had this like stringent level of, of becoming of your designation process. But then once you join the club, so to speak, you're still operated by the same rules. Uh, so then it became questions of, is the seventy-five percent rule okay? And I think the group really started going toward, um, doing a public hearing process, much like a, a planning and zoning case. To where people would come, so there would be a zero percentage requirements from the property owners, but they would have to be notified. There would have to be a public process. Probably through the Historic Preservation Commission and planning and zoning. Um, so it'd be a, a more of a, of a process within the public sphere. Uh, there's also conversation had, and this is where the com, um, where a lot of our. Agenda items kind of get derailed. And, and it's not, it's not necessarily a bad thing, but it's just something that came up, um, the foot. Uh, whenever somebody in the room had asked how many historic districts, um, Jefferson City has, and my response was three. Um, and there were a lot of people on the panel, uh, that thought, um, that the foot, uh, was a local historic district. Um, it's a, it's a historic district by proclamation. There's nothing in the ordinance that calls it, um, a local historic district. It has no regulations. It has no land use. Restrictions on it. Uh, so that was upsetting. Uh, there was a phone call there. It doesn't exist in the United States, except in New York City. Uh, so in New York City, there is a, they found a, um, uh. What was it? Like six, seventeen century? No, it wasn't that early. There was a slave burial ground right in the middle of Manhattan. Um, they, they were doing a development project and they thought that all the, all the, the people had been moved and they kept, they got two homebody's. So it was, I don't know, four hundred and they finally just said, stop, put them back. This is going to be a local historic district. You can't develop in this area. Because it, it was so problematic, um, as far as the redevelopment side of it, fine for, for historic preservation. So what do we do with the foot? What do we do with places that aren't there anymore? And I think this is a conversation that's being had, um, in a lot of communities. I know it's being had on state level and I know it's being had on, on a national level. Uh, one of the best examples is Tulsa. Um, they don't know what to do with it, but they want to do something, uh, because it's, well, because it's gone. Then it, it kind of flips it, flips the whole process on, on its, on its head because we're so used to preserving buildings and structures that are there. There's an archaeological component that you could pursue, but then there's certain rules with that. So, so we're looking at either, um. Maybe making like a cultural historic district or an honorary or something that is, that is, um, codifying a location and recognizing its significance. And keeping that, um, keeping the preservation of its history alive and not necessarily the building and the land. But it has, it has slowed things, those conversations, uh, because they've come up, have slowed those, have slowed the general process down. But it's also allowed us to have these conversations about what to do, um, with these areas because it couldn't, it, it has to be. Not just African-American history, but maybe Native American history that we don't know about or, or other minority populations.
History of Jewish cemetery that's over off of McCarty. There's several Jesus that come into that.
So it's, it's. It, it, what turned out to be like, okay, let's review our process and, and, and keep moving, keep the process moving, turned into a larger conversation. Um, so that's what we're, we're trying to get through those conversations, get, get through the conversation and also keep our process moving. And so it's, we're in a challenging spot, to be quite honest. It's challenging. Just trying to do the right thing.
Any questions for Rachel? I had a need. On the process. Um. The Paul Brun Historic Revitalization Grant.
Yeah, so we were very excited about this one, uh, last, what was it? May, March, sometime earlier in the spring. Uh, we applied, um, to the National Park Service for, um, the, the Paul, I don't know if it's Brun or Brun. Um, revitalization grants. And basically what it, what its design purpose is to do is to, um. Stimulate historic preservation in an area that needs it, it is, is. Order preservation, so we can do instruction projects, which is kind of rare with historic preservation fund grants. Um, we utilize the structural survey. Uh, so if you'll remember, we did the structural survey and I went through, we had engineers that went through and eyeballed a hundred properties within. The old Munichburg Commercial District and the Missouri State Capitol Historic District, so downtown in that little section of Old Munichburg. Uh, it happened to be one hundred properties, um, and they just kind of went street level and, and looked at the buildings, um, from all angles that they can publicly approach. Uh, and it really came back with, um. Uh. Fifty-nine percent of our buildings needed some attention. So, um, we had six, and they, and they labeled them, they identified them by color, so green, yellow, red, very basic. Um, green was, it looked, was pretty good, well-maintained. Yellow was, there were some structural things that were observed that needed to be re-examined more closely. No, because you gotta remember, they weren't going inside, they weren't getting up on a ladder, they weren't doing some of those things. Uh, six were, were significant overhead fall hazards that we had to deal with immediately. Um, and we did. Um, so those properties were identified as red. Um, so what we did, we used that structural survey as, as a reason, as a justification of why we would want to create a sub-granting program. Um, so we were one of eleven in the entire country.
Yeah.
To get the grants and we were only, uh, we were one of three municipalities to get it. Uh, most of the time it's like a state historic preservation office or state historical society that's applying to do historic preservation projects throughout their state. So we get to concentrate that money locally. Uh, so we're, we're very excited about that. Um, so if it gives you idea on how timeline it is going to, I, I noticed right before we got the award. Um, that other communities that received the grant last year were just now opening up their application process to people that could apply to get the funds. So we're probably about nine months to a year out before people can actually get the money to do the projects, um, on their buildings. Um, but we're, we're very excited.
Are you going to have to have a subcommittee to decide on who gets it to review the applications or do you know?
Oh, I, oh, yes, there will have to be something. Then I, and I do, I think that's a good idea to have it within this, this body to do.
So we've got work coming up. Okay.
Yeah. I wasn't gonna drop that bomb, but yeah.
Well, that's why I kind of wanted to give everybody a.
Well, I was waiting.
Being prepared.
Waiting. So we have to have, I have to have a kickoff meeting with our, with our N P S, um, project manager. And I, I was assuming that's where that was going and that's how we wrote the application, but.
Okay. Uh, Preservation Month, there's not really any updates yet for next year. Okay.
Well, I mean, it's up to you guys. What do you guys want to do?
Think if we need to find out more what they're gonna do with the, the conference, the conference, yeah. And because we haven't gotten any further details on that in the past month.
Mull it over, y'all.
Okay. Uh, that's right. I'm sorry. Is there any other business to come to the floor? Okay, next regular meeting will be October twelfth. And may I have a motion to adjourn? So. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody who's opposed, consent. Take the recording off.